Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call our meeting to order. Ms. Clerk, would you please take roll call? Dave Abdullah?
Here.
Bill Bazey?
Here.
Robert Coniston?
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxon?
Here.
Ray Muscat?
Here.
And Tom Winslow? He's here. Tom Winslow? Tom Winslow? We'll check on him. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm going to make sure Councilman Winslow did not call in because he has no sound on his for some reason, and I want to have him lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I can't.
Air. Air.
Okay.
Did you hear me?
Okay. At this time, I'd like to have Councilwoman Winslow lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. The item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Move to approve order of business for August 25th, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council Virtual Meeting as submitted.
For.
For my Abdullah?
To the flag.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Do we have any omissions for this yet?
I don't know, do we?
I'm just asking because I thought we talked about an omission.
Well, no, we just, at that time, it could fail if there's nothing else, right?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, because it's already on the agenda, we have to leave. Okay, at this time, is there any discussion on the Agenda Approval? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Approval of Minutes. This is minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of August 11th, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
I move that we approve the minutes from August 11th, 2020, electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council Virtual Meeting. Support. Item 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Public Hearings and Comment on Agenda Items. This time, we ask the public, you have two minutes. It must be an agenda item. George, help me to see if anybody's hand is raised. Okay, I've got Mr. Jackson here. I've unmuted you, sir.
There's two more after that, too, sorry.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
All right, I'm calling, I want to comment on item number 10, a petition from the citizens. This is regards to the barricade that was taken down on Kingsbury. I spoke to the mayor just after it was taken down, and he informed me that there were some concerns from city workers and the kids over by Star Academy. No problem, he'd keep an eye on it, and he admired the situation. It's gotten extremely out of hand. If you've read the petition, that's wonderful. The stop sign that popped up is useless. UPS, FedEx, everybody that drives down here, 90% of the people that drive down through the intersection, including marked city vehicles, by the way, don't stop. This street used to have no kids at all. I've got roughly 15, 16 little small children running around, and with this barricade being down, it's turned into a drag strip through here. So I just wanted to explain our position. This petition was done actually by conversation with everybody in the neighborhood. So it's not just, you know, one or two folks complaining, it's the entire block. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Christina Laslow, somebody on mute, I'm trying to find where she's at.
I got it.
Okay.
Hi, good evening. My comment is on Agenda Item 9B. On, I just want council to be aware that the budget that was proposed to city council had 4% increases for all the deputies. We worked really hard to get each and every deputy on the same pay scale. If council is going to consider this, I know council didn't consider this in May because they said there was a COVID crisis going on, but if council does consider this now, I would hope that they consider that this would be a raise across the board for deputies. Thank you.
Next, we have Leslie Windlass, can somebody please unmute her?
Got it.
Leslie, go ahead, please, you have two minutes.
Yes, mine should just be quick, mine is on the Agenda Item 8B. I have been to the last few city council meetings asking about this commission, and I was not able to get an interview with the mayor. He said that if I just did it through public comment, that he wouldn't object for me being the number five person on the committee, on the commission.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, do we have any other public comments?
Yep, we have Elizabeth Mahone.
Okay, go ahead, Rose. Unmute her, please.
Yep, I'm just.
Sorry about that. I also live on Kingsbury, and I also am, want to talk about item 10 on the agenda with the barricade. I, too, have heard various reasons why it's been taken down, but I'm in agreement with Mr. Jackson, it needs to be put up. Not only do we have speeders, there's also been damage to the cars. Someone went by two weeks ago spraying silly string in the evening all over the cars up and down the street. That parking lot has turned into a party fest on the weekends. There's no reason, when the school is closed and City Hall was closed, for that barricade to be taken down. It's not just the speeders, I mean, that parking lot there is a regular party fest.
Okay. Any other comment, Ms. Mahone?
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. I'd also like to make a brief comment on this also. I, years ago, grew up on that street. Originally, when my parents bought the house, it was a dead end. That's the way it was meant to be when the city decided the flat plan. It was only open because the Dearborn Heights Police Department, Dearborn Heights became a city in 1963, and they put the police department there and they built the City Hall. Once the police department was closed and tore down, they blocked it back up because that was originally how it was intended to be. And so that's just a little bit of history for anybody that might have some questions on it. Any other? Do we have any other comments? George, do you see anybody?
I don't think so.
Okay, this time, I'd like to move on to fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move city council approve 61 through 631 as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Coniston, is there any discussion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat, then Councilman Bazey.
I just got a quick question, and it's not anything to do with how to pay it, but on 63, the lead service lines, can we get a rundown of the houses that need to be replaced and the ones that already have been replaced for our next council meeting?
Okay, can we?
I guess that would be for Mr. Zem, Mr.?
Salmy.
Salmy?
I'm looking, unmute him, I'm not sure where he's at. Somebody, oh, wait, I found him. Director Salmy? I can't unmute you, you've got, okay, there you go.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, so we can provide that, but I can give you an update. As of 8:21, we have 161 completed, and we have 192 still to go. We had a field meeting today with the contractor. We are discovering more, so I'm probably going to have to come back to council and ask for another budget amendment, but I can give you a spreadsheet of the ones that have been completed, if you'd like. I can do it before next meeting, if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there any other, oh, Councilman Bazey, your next, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council Chair. I actually have two questions, the one that Councilman Muscat mentioned, 63. I was going to ask something similar, you know, for accountability. If we have, you know, we asked to see if we could put those on a website so people know, the residents, who has their homes, if they need to be updated. We need to know, like, which ones they are. And so, a list would be helpful if we have it, you know, if residents call us, we know which homes that we've done already, and especially the invoice with that much money. You know, it just lists the parts, but it doesn't list which homes is being done. I mean, I, yeah, thank you, Director Salmy, for mentioning, you know, how many homes, but would like to, I'd like to see a list of homes that were done, how many, not just how many, but like to have the homes that need to be done. So when we do get a call, we can answer the residents, that's the one. So you already discussed that. Item 617, you have the CSO, the L43 sewer separation. What is that? I mean, which sewer are we talking about, which area?
Hold on, let me unmute Director Salmy.
Yep, so that's the one that the council approved in the water budget. That's basically between Gully and Michigan Avenue, Beach Daily. We're doing in there separating the storm sewer out of the sanitary sewer, so it's not a combined sewer any longer. This is part of the three projects we spoke about for bonding and stuff like that. And then we're also replacing the water main. That's in process right now, we had another field meeting with them today also. And then, once the project's done, we are repaving all the streets in that area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thanks for the, Councilman Bazey?
That's it.
Okay, Councilman Abdullah?
This is for Director Salmy. If you don't mind, Director, it's on the same item 63 with the lead pipes. I know the letters that were sent out, and I know that was mandated to us to send them out to all residents. Unfortunately, a lot of residents have received it, and upon reading it, are just not totally understanding the spec of that. So do you mind giving them just a generic outline in regards to that particular letter? And where, if somebody received it, doesn't necessarily mean they personally have a problem, but how you had to send it out to the whole city instead of just specific people that had a specific problem? Because a lot of people are getting confused, thinking by getting that letter that they personally have a problem on their home, and they've called me and I've explained it to them, but I think it's a good idea to explain it to the, you know.
So, yeah, so in brief, the city exceeded the action level again. We did it in November, and were mandated by Eagle to send out the letter to advise the residents that we had an exceedance. We tested 62 homes with no unleaded services. I believe seven of them exceeded the action level. So that triggers a couple mechanisms through Eagle. One of them is to do a press release, one is to do a public education piece. That piece that went to every home is the public education piece. It advises people what to do as far as, you know, if you have a lead service, even if you don't have a lead service, gives you a web, some, bunch of websites to go to to look at, there's plenty of information in it. I did speak to the reporter from the Urban American News on Thursday. She did a pretty good article. We went over that, you know, the lead is not in the water, it's in the pipes, in the homes' fixtures, you know, those types of things. You know, any fixture in the home pre-2014 has lead in it. So it's, the water is safe, it's just an action level exceedance which triggers that public education piece to be mailed out.
Okay, and I think some residents' fears are directly connecting it to what happened in Flint, whereas in Flint, obviously, there was water that was brought into their homes. In this particular case, it's the mechanisms, the plumbing, and I think they're just confusing it and getting more panicky, obviously.
Sure, and if there is a lead service, that's why we're replacing these services, too, so we eliminate that portion of it. You know, then the rest is going to be on the homeowners to, you know, do some work in their home, but there's ways to deal with it, you know, let the cold water run for three to five minutes in the morning. Filters are a good option, you know, there's plenty of information in there, so.
Okay, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? At this time, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So opposed? The ayes have it. Next item is consideration of bids with the Parks and Recreation Director Hadad. This is for the return of bid bond for Hype Athletics.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat, you got unmuted, so.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat, hit. Councilman Muscat?
No, I just wanted to make sure that you unmuted me.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, I'm sorry.
That's all right. All right, you want me to make the motion, move it?
Go ahead.
All right. So, Madam Chair, thank you. I move to concur with Parks and Recreation Director Brian Hadad and return the Hype Athletics bid bond of $3,000 as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bazey, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Councilwoman Melissa Hicks Clayton made the motion, so she can go first.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, yeah. No, I just have a question about procedure. There should be, I imagine, a procedure in place to return these unapproved or unsuccessful bid bonds, because this one goes back to 2017, and I'm just curious what happened, or what are we doing to make sure there's something in place to prevent a company or business from waiting, you know, three, two and a half, three years to get back their bid bond when it's unsuccessful? That was my question, thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we've got the mayor raising his hand, hold on, let me unmute the mayor. Whoops, hold on.
Am I unmuted now? We cannot return a bid bond without council's approval. So a lot of times, and many of you will remember, when you award a bid, you will include in your motion for the unsuccessful bidders a return of their bid bond, and that's important. We can, we cannot return a bid bond without council's approval.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah? I'm sorry. I'm past Councilman Winslow first, and then you can unmute them, so.
Yeah, my question was the procedure, and also, what was this project that they bid on? Is Director Hadad there?
The Canfield.
Canfield, sir.
It was the Canfield one, okay, thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bazey, I skipped you in here, did you still have anything to say?
Yeah, actually, I was going to say, I have two questions. One was kind of asked, but I wanted to see, why is it taking so long? So if the mayor mentioned that it needs council approval, why wasn't it put on the agenda a long time ago? That's one. And the second one, for the Elite Sports, are we, you know, are we, did they get their money as well? Or is that something that is going to come in front of us? I thought this one did.
I, we returned elites a couple meetings ago already.
Has it been, though, has it been returned? So why was?
They have received the check, I can check and verify, but I know that we approved it to be returned. Um, we got treasures who here, here, hold on.
Director Hadad's got his hand up.
Okay, well, we got, we got.
Aye. Yeah, we signed the check like two weeks ago. Unfortunately, somebody put them in the mail without addresses on them. So they did not reach some of the people. We issued the check for Elite Sport today, and it was hand-delivered by Brian Hadad's today.
Thank you.
Next, we got Councilwoman Abdullah.
Madam Chair, this is for the mayor, I just wanted to clarify something. Because this almost honestly implies, like, we did something wrong as a council. Unless something is put on the agenda for us to approve it or not, we won't know that there's a bond bid that didn't go, you know, that didn't go back to anybody, a deposit. So as administration, that's when it brings it to us, and then we either approve it or deny it. So in this particular case, unfortunately, that's where the ball was possibly dropped. We wouldn't know, like, right now, I have no idea right now what money's out there with the administration that's not been returned, you know, with the bond bids. That's where you, as administration, bring it to us to approve it or deny it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So opposed? The ayes have it. Next, reports from Mayor. We have a legal opinion regarding use of cable peg fees for operation expenses, including salaries and wages.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
Is this with note and file, or?
It is.
Oh, no, no, no. No. Am I on?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, no, this, legal opinions of this sort, there is a separate file in the clerk's office. This needs to be referred and be included in that legal file. I will also tell you that we had a meeting with the treasurer, the controller, myself, the attorney, and Chrissy, and if you read this long opinion, a key date is the 26th, I think, of September, and we've got the accounting and everything, I think, in position so that we follow that opinion strictly. The good thing that I like about it is the fact that it reaffirmed Neolado's work, and that's the fact that it was eligible to pay salaries and other expenses from peg fees prior to September 26th, 2019.
Okay. We need a support?
There was no motion.
Okay.
There was never a motion.
Okay, again, this is for legal opinion regarding use of cable peg fees for operational expenses, including salaries and wages.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
I move that we receive the legal opinion from Corporation Counsel Garmiaki regarding the use of cable peg fees for operational expenses, including salaries and wages, as requested by our temporary treasurer, Zuhair Abdul-Hak, and have it filed with our other legal opinions by the city clerk.
At this time, I don't hear a support, so this.
Unbelievable.
Failed.
Unbelievable.
Next item.
Council Chair, Council Chair?
Yes.
You know, I'm getting unbelievable from our mayor, but.
How much from?
I'm still, you know, I like the end opinion where salaries can't be used, but I still believe, through all the research that everybody else has done, these fees, these peg fees, we're not supposed to pay salaries. Now, for some reason, we have two attorneys that give that, and hundreds other that say, no. This is why I didn't support it. I agree with the findings at the end, but don't agree with everything else.
Point of order, at this point, we need to move on because the motion failed, there's no more discussion. And I apologize.
Madam Chair.
At this time, there's no further discussion. Next, we have Community and Cultural Relations Commission appointments.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
Okay, let me just get to here and zoom into it. It's a long opinion. Okay, just give me one second. All right, here we go. All right, I move that we concur with, okay, this is for 5B. I move that we concur with Mayor Dan Piletko for the appointment to the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, and he's found a good mix of residents for re-establishing the Community and Cultural Relations Commission, and he's got some community activists that he's picked, and there's five individuals, I'm going to name the four, and then I'm going to look for the name, I think it's Leslie Windlass, but let me.
Leslie Windlass.
That's what I thought, okay. And this would be Ms. Latonya Gator of 5302 Madison, Mr. Gary Barkov of 5615 Academy, Mr. Mohammed Baydoun of 6013 Amboy, Ms. Seham Jafer of 1325 Evangeline, and Ms. or Mrs., I'm not sure, I'm sorry, Leslie Windlass, and I'm not sure of her address, but I believe, obviously, of Dearborn Heights.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe, because this commission by ordinance, there are five appointments that are the mayor's, and there are two that are city council. And I get, the mayor, okay, with Leslie Windlass being his fifth appointment, I would like to, if we may, we can do it in a separate motion. I believe that's a received note and file, by the way, on this letter, but I would like for the council to nominate and appoint Nellie Tre- Trey Montana, excuse me, Trey Montana, because she is a certain individual that has worked very hard with Latonya Gator and Leslie Windlass on many things in our community that are related to this commission. So I would like to take that into consideration, please.
I support that motion also.
Okay, well, we need to entertain the motion before, and then we'll make that as another motion after it.
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, just to clarify, so are you asking council for six people?
No, no, what happens is the mayor will, according to ordinance, the mayor appoints five, and council picks two of their own.
Right, so that's what I'm trying, you're asking Councilwoman Lisa Hicks Clayton for six people total, correct?
I, we're asking six total, but we're going to have to do that in a separate motion, Councilwoman.
That's right. But for clarification, I want to make sure, Madam Chair, that the mayor, for his fifth appointment, is for Leslie Windlass, and that would be part of this document received note and file.
Okay, your answer is, go ahead, please.
Can I, I just want to comment, could the council have Leslie as one of their two? Because I have a fifth dynamic person that I'm working on, because I had not heard back from Leslie. I think she'll be a great addition, but if you can make her one of your two, and then I have a fifth one, I'll probably be submitting in two weeks.
Ooh.
There? Could you please?
Yes.
They want to know who?
The person is checking to see if their schedule and everything, but they are a rather dynamic individual, but I don't want to give their name yet in case they have to decline, and then the person that gets appointed would say, oh, it was the second choice.
Okay. Councilwoman Abdullah?
Madam Chair, can we have the mayor, if you don't mind, just for some of the residents that are listening to this, clarify what specifically the motive and the direction, and et cetera, et cetera, for this particular commission?
Mayor?
Agenda?
Yeah. What I've done in the interviews is I've wanted to get individuals who were very strongly geared towards wanting to make an impact, and we've talked about certain kinds of programs and things. And I will give you one that I spent a lot of time talking to Latonya Gator about, and also Seham Jafer, and it's about the fact that there's extreme amounts of mental health that is not being addressed, in particular, when we have police runs that go to homes in which there's domestic disputes. We had an unfortunate other mental case this weekend, and I've asked them about looking at whether or not we would be able to tap in to the CARES Act funds that the city's receiving and look at that as providing a mental health aspect in our community. So it's a concept, but it hasn't been formalized, but we've talked about that. We've also talked about the fact of awareness and dealing with the fact that we all are together and need to operate as a complete and total one community. And so I've been looking for energetic people, people who are committed to that type of formation, and in my words, we're all God's children, and we need to work together and be respectful of everybody, and to enhance that in our community. And then also look at different aspects to make the community better and an awareness of some of the issues that we have with racism and other things of like, people who are elderly and are discriminated against, people of color, and others, people that have disabilities. So I'm excited. So I'm excited about this group. And that's kind of what I've asked them to look at, but I've not told them what to look at. I've said, be creative, let's make a difference as a group.
And Mayor, I do have a private message from Leslie Windlass. And she said that she has tried to call you multiple times over the past few weeks. Are you aware of this?
Yeah, I, she called, the agenda gets cut off on Tuesday. And I wasn't able to get a hold of her prior to Tuesday. And so I sent her an email saying to mention, so she could get appointed, and she got appointed. The problem was that I, it was too late for this agenda and I've had some crises I had to deal with. So I wouldn't have, I just had to issue, had to direct my efforts in certain other areas. But I would have called her, I, we briefly have talked, I think she's a good choice.
Okay, yeah, because I know you're holding the spot for somebody else that you're not definitely, don't know if they can definitely do it, and this person was definitely wise to choose.
Yep, but if you included her on yours, it will work out, because she's a good choice.
Thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda.
Council Chair. I think we have another motion.
Right, next item on the agenda will be Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. So I move that the city council approves as their appointment to the cultural relations, Community Cultural Relations Commission, Leslie Windlass and Nellie Tre- Trey Montana as our appointments. Madam Chair.
Support.
Support by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Annapolis High School Annual Homecoming Parade, which is Friday, October 9, 2020.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move we concur with our police chief and our mayor and our fire chief and approve the Annapolis High School Homecoming Parade on Friday, October 9, starting at 5:30 PM, as outlined in Item 9C-80.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have a veto. This is veto number 10 of two adopted motions related to current claims 6-11 and 6-16 and an interim contract for Corporation Counsel Miaki. At this time, I need Madam Clerk to read our charter.
Section 7.13 veto by mayor. The mayor shall have the power of the veto of resolutions and ordinances passed by the council, provided that said veto, with the mayor's reasons in writing, must be filed with the city clerk at least 24 hours before the date of the next regular meeting of the council, at which said meeting, the clerk shall present such veto or vetoes to the council. The council may only at said meeting reconsider the vote at which such proceedings were passed and adopted. And if it so elects, may only at said meeting re-adopt such proceedings by a five-seventh vote of all members elected, in which event the veto shall be overridden and it will bar the right of the mayor from any future vetoes of the proposed legislation. Such proceeding shall then become effective on the following day succeeding such meeting of the council and ordinances so passed shall become effective immediately thereafter upon publication.
Thank you. Next, it's Councilwoman Chairwoman Melonowski Maxwell. I will reintroduce for possible reconsideration of city council motions 20-269 and 20-270 regarding current claims 6-11 and 6-16, as well as interim contract for Corporation Counsel Miaki.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Bazey.
I make, I can make the motion to reintroduce the motion 20-269 and motion 20-270 as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. All those in favor say aye.
Council Chair.
Wait.
Are we gonna have a discussion?
We don't discuss on a veto override. We voted in the past.
Well, I'd like to know what I'm voting on first. Because I truly don't understand this at all. I know that we, in the past, the Corporation Counsel has submitted to the mayor a scheme, a fee schedule, okay? That to me is a contract. And he tells us either he's gonna hold his pricing or have a slight little increase. We've done this in the past. And I just want to put it forward that we haven't seen that. So I don't want any litigation coming against the city, but yet we need to have a, some sort of something in writing of what we're going to be receiving from Corporation Counsel. Now, I don't know what to do here. We're going real fast on this. Regardless of how things go, we need, we need legal counsel. Regardless if we agree with them or not, we still need it. And I'm afraid, I truly am afraid. So I, you know, this is, to me, is kind of crazy.
Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
I have Councilman Coniston next.
Very briefly, Madam Chair, the city of Durbin Heights has a budget of close to or at $50 million a year. I had got a call from Assistant Corporation Counsel Mark Roberts, who's with the law firm, Acrost Wardle, in their municipal law department. They do work for Durbin Heights and many other cities. And, you know, they, they're, if they're not getting paid, and they, they, our charter requires our city attorney to be a resident, and then he appoints assistant city attorneys, they're not paid, they're just not gonna do any work. And, and I think some of, again, some of our suppliers with the city, some of our vendors are gonna raise their prices and or go elsewhere. So I think this issue has to be straightened out. I, as I read the mayor's veto, the, one of the issues is the ability of the council to ask for a temporary Corporation Counsel. Like I say, we need to have a study session and address this issue, what we're gonna do. It's the mayor's nomination, and then we affirm it or don't affirm it. Thank you.
At this point, we do have a motion on the table. We need to stick to just this motion. And if it fails, then we decide to go to a study session possibly. I have Councilwoman Abdullah next.
So Council Chair, we had talked about a study session for this particular issue when we had the last meeting, which was about two weeks ago. And I know we didn't have a study session. In addition to that, for our, either current, for Gary Miaki, our Council Garmiaki, there was supposed to be a proposed contract brought forward. Now, the mayor is saying in his veto that we don't, that we do not need a contract.
We do.
I find that very, very difficult to understand, to be honest with you, how we can have a Corporation Counsel without a contract. That honestly makes no sense to me. And then even if the charter needs to be changed, then that's what we do. But either way, we're supposed to, we brought a contract, we're supposed to have a study session. We should not be still dealing with this now three, four weeks later. And it's still unfair for Gary Miaki not to be paid at this particular point. I definitely think him, Mark Roberts, everybody else should be paid. But we should also do either a study session on this or look at the contract. But we can't just not pay people. To me, that makes no sense, honestly.
Right, I understand. Quite honestly, I have no problem paying him. But according to our charter, he needs to have some kind of contract. The mayor did bring a motion before us to appoint him and it failed. So at that point, that's when his contract with us legally ended as an appointment. He could come in just with a temporary contract. And as far as the charter goes, that's what the charter says, that's our law. We, I tried to change it in February, on February 18. I asked Corporate Counsel Miaki to please help us start a charter review committee. I have yet to hear anything in regards to that. We could have changed that by now, but nothing's ever done. I haven't heard since February 18. And like I said, I can't, you know, it's a crime to pay something.
Okay, but we talked about a possible temporary contract from Gary Miaki, maybe 30 days or 45 days until we figure out what the heck we're gonna do.
That's what.
And with due respect, Gary, we don't have a contract still yet.
Okay, and that's what we asked him to bring forward, a temporary contract at this meeting. And that's what they're vetoing, because they don't want to draw up the temporary contract.
That's what we're, that's what we're, the old veto is about, a temporary contract.
Yes. They don't want to bring forward a temporary contract.
Madam Chair.
We need some limits to it, like we had discussed, so many days was fair. That's all we're asking. I mean, I do believe they should be, they should be paid, but under the proper terms. I, with conscience, can't approve payment without following procedure. Any further discussion?
The mayor's raising his hand.
Hold on a minute.
Okay, let me, let me state a couple things, is I am utterly confused. The comments at the last few council meetings and the actions that have been taken by your body, I don't feel match one another. So it's became very difficult for me to understand. There, you, if you want to follow the chair, or council chair, there is no provision for a temporary Corporation Counsel. There is an agreement with the Corporation Counsel. And the council, the city council was given a dollar amount by Corporation Counsel about a year ago. And that dollar amount was accepted by all the attorneys. Consequently, that is the agreement. There is an agreement. I think the misunderstanding is some people want a written agreement. There is no need for a written agreement. There is a contract between these attorneys and the city at a particular rate. So that agreement exists. You did not make, there was no motion on my recommendation back on reappointing Corporation Counsel Gary Miaki. It, there was no vote, nothing. So I did not know how to take that. Then the comment was, and we are still under a COVID condition. I do not have the ability to be doing interviews. If you want another Corporation Counsel, I will submit another name. But the fact of the matter is, I am utterly confused as to where this body is going.
Mayor, we have asked you in the past to do Zoom meetings, as you have done for this commission that you appointed people on. You were able to do that, and you were warned long last November to start looking. You failed to, and at this time, you failed to bring us a Corporation Counsel that we can appoint according to charter. You failed on your end.
No, you failed. I gave you one, you didn't vote on.
You don't yell or I'm gonna.
You didn't vote on them.
Mayor, I'm in, I'm mute, too, but please do not yell.
Council Chair.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
When the mayor said we approved, how long did we approve him for?
Well, for the term. His term was up at the May 1st. It's the furthest it could have been extended. Once that failed, his, that, that's done. That doesn't, you know, that was following his contract.
Am I allowed to make a motion?
No.
After the, after this, after this vote, am I allowed to make another motion?
Yes, you are. We can, but we need to vote on this veto first and then move forward and figure out how we're gonna get him paid.
Madam Chair.
One.
Let me.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
Okay, so, Mr. Mayor, two things I disagree with you on. As far as being, and this has no reflection of whether we go with Gary Miaki or not. And so I want to make it clear, that's not what I'm stating at this particular point. But we, as citizens of the United States, at this particular point, for all intensive purposes, are in a roundabout way interviewing people to become our president. And that's being done via Zoom, via video, via TV. So if we could hire a president via TV or Zoom or some sort of a screen, obviously, we should be able to hire an attorney. So with due respect, that should be able to be done. It should be almost no problem. And I know we did it with the treasurer, I know we did it with the clerk. Okay, in addition to that, you mentioned there's no contract needed. Provided that is the case, then just like he was hired on a one-year basis, based on the dollar figure that he presented, then he could come in with a presentation, doesn't have to be a contract, come in with a presentation or a proposal of X amount of dollars for 45 days. Now, we will approve it. If you don't feel comfortable or it's not allowed to be a temporary contract, then let's have just a proposal with the dollar figure is, we will approve it or deny it. But I agree with the rest of my council members that we cannot just continue to pay without any type of agreement. And based on what you're suggesting, you're suggesting just a verbal agreement. I find that very difficult to have somebody hired as our attorney just based on a verbal agreement. I tell you, my business, that wouldn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, after this, we're gonna take a vote. Go ahead, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Oh, thank you. Madam Chair, I just wanted to bring up, I've been on council since 2012. And when I think about what has been done in the past as far as precedent, that every year, like annually, we would get the letter on the agenda that would have the fee schedule, which in my mind, when the council approves that, is approving it similar to a contract, I don't recall having that, where council approved that this year, which means it doesn't exist. So I just wanted to reiterate that. That is, from my knowledge over the past, you know, years, that that has always been submitted to us and we vote to extend, and that's annually. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we're gonna take a vote on the veto. All those in favor, I'm sorry, reintroducing the possible consideration of city council motions 20-269 and 20-270 regarding current claims 6-11 and 6-16, as well as interim contract for Corporate, Corporation Counsel Miaki. All those in favor say aye.
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 No.
Okay, let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat.
Aye.
Councilman Coniston.
No.
Councilwoman Bazey.
Yes.
Councilman Abdullah.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel.
Yes.
Councilwoman Melonowski Maxwell is a yes. We have overwrote the temp veto. Next item on the agenda, we have Treasurer Abdul-Hak for the 3% increase in salary for Deputy Treasurer Garcia.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Madam Chair, I would like to move to table this item. I do believe we need further discussion, there are several points. And I'm not doubting Ms. Colleen Garcia's work and what she's doing in that office. As I know, I've sat in that office, I know, you know, all of the employees in that office are doing a fabulous job and work very hard. But I do agree that, you know, when we talk about one deputy director, we need to talk about all deputy directors. And we, as a council body, had rejected giving raises due to COVID and the financial status of the city based on what's happening with COVID. So I do think we need further discussion as well as actuary report, talk about how it impacts retirement system. So I'd like to table it, please.
Okay.
I support that.
Councilman Muscat supports it. Any discussion or would we like to just vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, let's, okay, this is to table the raise. Councilman Coniston. Did you?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Councilman Wenzel was a no, he was the only no, I believe.
Councilman Wenzel? Let me, roll call. Okay, Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
No.
Melonowski Maxwell is yes. Next item on the agenda.
Council Chair. Council Chair, I was asking if I could make a motion on, after the veto override, and I never got a chance to make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, make your motion.
I just want, make a motion that city council next Tuesday have a closed session for contract for the Corporation Counsel. And I don't know if I can do that by motion or not, but it seems like that. How do we schedule a study session for it then? Because we have to have it.
I'll schedule one. We'll discuss what time everybody wants to do it, and that will be next Tuesday. Next item on the agenda is Fire Chief Brogan, permission to accept the AFG supplemental COVID-19 grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move council, I concur with Chief Brogan in requesting permission to accept the AFG supplemented COVID-19 grant for $15,389 to cover some of the COVID-related expenses as outlined in 9C. uh, for $15,389 to cover some of the COVID-related expenses as outlined in 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go oppose. The ayes have it. Next, we have Fire Chief Brogan, purchase and payment of two walk behind floor cleaners.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move that we concur with our Fire Chief, Dave Brogan, uh, and approve the purchase and payment for two walk behind floor cleaners as outlined in item 9D.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Oppose? The ayes have it. Next, we have Police Chief Myers, approval for private sale of police vehicle.
Council Chair?
Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
Uh, I move, uh, council concur with Police Chief Myers, uh, in the private sale of, of the following vehicles, a 2011 Ford Crown Victoria uh, as outlined in 9E.
Support.
Support.
Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Adella?
I did, i- and I was gonna say, you know, just internet research on this type of a car, a police interceptor with this type of, at least close mileage. And across the board, I found from what I've seen, and I am by no stretch of the imagination, a car expert or a car value expert. But I just did a, on an internet search, and it seemed to be more than $3,800, uh, with the amount of mileage on there, 30,000 miles on there. I mean, you had some of that, I'm just giving you some of the preliminary ones, with a hundred and some thousand miles at around 35,000. So with 30,000 miles, it seems like a low price to me, and that's what prompted me to do some, again, just internet search. I just want to make that clear. It's not necessarily an expert opinion. But I just think, I, I, I would like at least to have maybe somebody else just look into it a little bit further. It seemed lower.
Kind of an old car though.
Again, I'm not an expert. I'm just throwing it out there. Maybe ask an expert, but that, I just did a different internet search on different car sites and, and it seemed like a low price.
Probably with being a police car, driven as hard as it is, it's probably 98,000 or 190,000, uh, hard miles on that vehicle.
Fire Chief Myers speaks next.
So, we, first of all, we use the Kelly Blue Book, which is the standard. So if you look at the pricing on the Kelly Blue Book-
I've seen that, yeah.
Uh, with the mileage, that is the standard. Secondly, we have retired our entire Crown Victoria fleet. They're nine years old, they're not made. We sold all of our parts vehicles. We have a different business model than Inkster. Inkster's in a different, uh, different scenario. And if we can help them, uh, properly outfit their police department with a vehicle that they can use, whether it's parts or to actually be deployed, I think it's the best thing we can do. I believe the Kelly Blue Book is fair. Um, we would normally send that to an auction and we have no idea what we would get based on that. We wouldn't sell it privately other than that, but because it's another law enforcement agency, I believe we're, we're really hitting three stones, you know, three birds with one stone. We're helping somebody out, getting our maximum value and getting our car out of our fleet and uninsured.
Okay, I respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Go oppose. The ayes have it. Next, under petitions to citizens, this is to reinstall barricade located on North Kingsbury Street. Let me read the petition. It says petition to put barricade backup on North Kingsbury. We, the residents of Kingsbury Street are petitioning the city of Dearborn Heights to have the barricade reinstalled. They said barricade was located at the end of the second block of Kingsbury north of Ford Road. The city did not take into consideration what the repercussions would be for the residents when they decided to take the barricade down. The amount of traffic has increased tremendously. The traffic division collected data over two weeks and it showed 941 vehicles passing through. Our section is only one block long. The number is extremely high considering that the barricade has been in place for at least 15 years. It was taken down for the construction of the hockey rink and to repair the parking lot for the repairs on George Street. It was always replaced. The city did not take into consideration all the children on this particular block. Children cross the street and don't always look, but worse is the drivers that do not pay attention. Yes, there have been quite a few close calls, way too many speeders and reckless drivers. The stop sign that was installed is useless. We and the residents pay our taxes and deserve a say on what the city wants to do if we infect, uh, if it has an effect on our neighborhood. We want the city to not only replace the barricade, but to formulate a plan regarding the parking lot by the hockey rink. It has become a local gathering spot that is loud, constantly filled with trash. It even had burn off marks from folks doing donuts in the lot. We understand our concerned citizens, oh, I'm sorry, we, the undersigned, our concerned citizens who are urging the city to act now and reinstall the barricade on North Kingsbury Street. We recommend something that could be opened in case of emergency. And I've got signatures, we've got, apparently everybody on the street has signed it. So, somebody want to make a motion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move that we, uh, receive this and open it up for discussion, and I for one would like to hear from the police chief if he's able to talk about this and, uh, the reasons for. I remember we had a request from a business there, uh, to remove it, and I'm familiar with the property. The, the, back when the, the actual owner of all the property lived upstairs in the apartment above what was the trail bar. But I'd like to hear from the police chief, uh, if he's prepared what-
Okay, this is a motion.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Bazey make a motion.
Okay, I make, okay, as, as you mentioned, Council Chair, without reading the whole thing, as, and you also said, this is a motion, uh, to, uh, to reinstall the barricade located on North Kingsbury Street. So I make the motion to reinstall the barricade located on North Kingsbury Street as outlined in 10A.
Support. Support the motion.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Councilwoman Wenzel, you have a question?
Yeah, um, I don't know who authorized the removal, but if there's, uh, if we know who it is, can they explain why they removed the barricade permanently?
Mayor, go ahead, please.
Okay, it, uh, it came up at a department head meeting, and the first advocate was our librarian, who felt very vehemently in that that barricade had to remain off because of the difficulty connected to the uh, school on the corner of Fenton and Hass. I have received, uh, calls from, uh, one particular resident, and he gives me counts all the time. And Dan, I don't know if he's on the program, but we've had a chat. This was referred to the police department, and I think you'll find it interesting, uh, because before we make any changes to roads and stuff, we have a traffic department, we get their recommendations. And you might want to talk to, uh, uh, I'd like to have the police chief tell you what his preliminary findings were.
Okay, go ahead, Chief Myers.
Council Chair, are you able to, is somebody able to allow me to share my screen? Um, I want to show you the data.
Sure, I can do that. Hold on a minute. Let me, um, go ahead, sir.
Okay. All right, it's gonna take me one sec, but I'm gonna get you there. All right, can everybody see the data, this, the Dearborn Heights survey description? Are you able to see that, ma'am?
Yes, I see it.
Okay. So that fancy machine that you bought just doesn't have digital displays, it also collects data. And, uh, at the end of this meeting, I can provide you this data and you can see it, but the, these are the raw data numbers. These are the actual numbers that that sign was posted in front of 5920 Ca- uh, Kingsbury. It went from the July 20th, uh, this year, from 10, basically 10:45 in the morning through July 28th. So roughly eight days. During that eight days, the actual total vehicle count was 964, as you see here on the thing. Northbound meaning closing, it was coming towards the sign, and southbound meaning it was going away from the sign. So either coming in or going. So of those 964, this is your data breakdown. Of those 964 cars, 910 of them are 94.4%, so roughly one out of, 19 out of every 20 cars were going below the speed limit. Uh, the rest of the cars, 5%, 5.6, were going somewhere between 25 and 33. And then one car exceeded the speed limit of 35 miles an hour. Um, so roughly, if you look down, I'll put my cursor there, the 85th percentile. Um, you're talking below speed limits for, for 17 out of every 20 cars. Um, every car does not mean 960 cars that didn't belong there or didn't belong on that street. Every resident that exits their driveway or returns to their residence is counted as one of those vehicles. So that's 120 vehicles a day, um, spread out amongst all the people on that block. Uh, this is just the data that I can provide to you. Um, I, 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 during that timeframe, I do not see a speeding issue. I see one vehicle over 35 miles an hour. I see 95% below 25 miles an hour. Um, that's going, that's going to the park or coming from that parking lot. Uh, we installed the, the stop sign. We have our opinions whether it's useless or if it, it, it does its job, but it's there, it was asked to be bid. We did the study to try to help with traffic. It's been in place. Um, I do not live on that street, so I, I can't say whether it's useless or not. What I can say is it's noticeable when somebody doesn't do it, but very often we don't recognize when somebody does stop. Um, I see, uh, a normal amount of traffic on a street that's open to the public. This is actually a very low count. We have other cities in our, or other streets in our city that have thousands of cars that go through it a weekday and have considerably higher numbers. I know this is one street that was blocked off, and I understand the concerns of the citizens, but this is the data that I can provide to you from this one week. So I, I will email this to you, but, uh, the short of it, 95% of the vehicles are obeying the traffic laws on that area, even with that street closed. Speed laws.
Okay, thank you.
Council Chair?
Madam Chair?
I'd like to, um, make it known that there is 34 signatures on this petition. And if each one of these people left and came home once a day, that's 68 cars. And that's accounting for almost half the traffic that's coming down there. Um, Councilman Muscat, go ahead, please.
You know, it, it's, you know, the, 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 these, these speed signs that we go and see and you're traveling at 25. I know I tend to slow down when I see them, and I'm sure a lot of other people tend to slow down when they see them. And does this, does this, um, piece of equipment, can it tell when someone runs a stop sign or not?
No, that, it's ready, this is just running speed.
Okay, so, you know, people are complaining of the stop sign being run, um, and not stopping at the stop sign. So that's a big concern when you have such a short street that for as long as I can remember, as a kid riding my bike in the neighborhood, has always been closed off, a dead-end street. And, uh, we do have a park there, and, uh, if, I think it would be safer for the kids in the park to have it as a dead end, my personal opinion.
Um, both of you, if I remember correctly, a few weeks ago, there was a bad accident at that park where somebody had, um, was speeding down Kingsbury from Ford Road, went through the south side and went into the, um, baseball dining fence, went right through it. Um, I was called by residents when it happened, and that in itself is scary if somebody would have been in that baseball dining when it happened.
A- a- and I do believe it was only o- o- open because of the reconstruction of Fenton Road. And, and, uh, and George, uh, I believe. And that's when it was opened. It wasn't open before that. Uh, when they started re- redoing, uh, the, the road in front of the, uh, uh, library. Uh, that's when the place opened, uh, when the barricades came down. So I, I didn't see where we had a, um, um, any, uh, any, um, discussion about it being open for, uh, for that. It just, they just opened it up and did it, which made sense at that time. But now I don't see it, it making sense for it being open.
Okay, Chief Myers?
Council Chair?
Before we go on further, Chief Myers, can you go home to the screen split?
Sure.
I don't think I'm seeing anybody who won my, like-
Sure. If I could just say one more thing, I'd appreciate it, and I could, I don't, like I said, I, I, I have a chip in the game because I care about the community and I care what our residents think. Um, it is, that is one street, um, opening that up, uh, speaking with librarian McCaffery as well. Um, we do have a, a school in that area as well, and, uh, it's a, it's a, a well-populated school. It's a vibrant part of our community. And opening that street has also eased our congestion in that area as a police department. So although one street has increased, it has also alleviated issues in other areas of the city. Um, so we have to balance both of those. Um, I will respectfully do or follow whatever rules, and I'm sure DPW will as well. But it's more, it is not just one street we're talking about. It's our community that we're talking about. And that entire area of the school, city hall, Kingsbury, all the way out to Ford Road. Um, all those things are taken into consideration, and I think should be considered by you when you're making this, uh, decision.
Okay, I've got, um, Mac, um, Mac Caffrey wants to speak. I'm, I'm using, go ahead.
Hello. Um, I just want to give a little input as to what went in this decision. Uh, you know, uh, I've been in the library for about 14 years, and one constant complaint I constantly get is the high level of traffic at that particular intersection. Um, people visiting the library, people visiting city hall, um, week in, week out, two or three hours a day when school's in, it's dangerous. It's bad. It's a rough intersection. So, you know, based on those complaints, um, and, you know, the fact that that particular intersection, as Chief has brought up, isn't just a gateway for that school, for a K through 12, you know, 12, at least 1,500 students, I think, was about the last time I'd heard. And the library and city hall and a large park. All of that traffic goes through one individual intersection, um, a four-way stop. And, you know, that seems, based on an eyeball test, to be a, a pretty prudent decision to try to take that traffic and not just dump it all to another street, but to at least shave off some cars down an alternative exit. Um, and, you know, the, the results of that particular, uh, traffic survey indicate that it's about a little over 100 cars a day. Um, which, you know, if you break that down, it's about five cars per hour that actually go down the street. Now, that's not during peak times. It might be higher or lower than that, and that's understandable. Um, but, uh, you know, I've had this complaint for a number of years, and, you know, perhaps what's called for is, uh, people across the community to come across or to come to some better decision on how to resolve this particular issue. There's also a couple other reasons. In terms of equity and, and traffic distribution, it seems that if you have a lot of people going down Fenton and George, it's better to take that traffic and divide it at least among two streets rather than just have it on one street. Um, you know, there are, there are kids on Fenton. Um, there are kids on many other streets that go through there. And, you know, i- if you can take some of that traffic and divert it a little bit, it might increase, uh, the safety on those particular streets. Um, and just for, uh, benchmarking purposes, so we could get an idea of what we're talking about intersection to intersection. I, I looked at a camera, this is what I do for fun on Friday nights. I sit there and look at a camera on Fenton and George Street. So we had about, uh, 2,800 plus cars last Monday, just one day, at that particular intersection. No school. All our city institutions aren't firing on all cylinders, 2,800 cars one day. And that seems like an awful lot of traffic. Um, so, you know, based on that, I mean, ultimately, I, I agree with the chief, this isn't my decision. Um, you know, I gave my input at the time saying, you know, hey, maybe we should just leave it down so we can split this traffic out. Um, but personally, uh, as a, as a department head, I would disagree with any solu- any solution that takes more traffic and puts it on intersection that is already extremely high volume and very dangerous. So that's my input. Um, thank you for listening.
Okay, any other discussion?
Council Chair, one more note.
Councilman Muscat?
You know, it's a petition signed by everyone on the block. How does a city go against the wishes of its residents? That's what I'm gonna say. Uh, how do you go against the wishes of an entire city block that wants something to happen? Just want to leave that in your minds.
Okay, because, you know, I'm also thinking about this, I mean, the original plan for our city had that as a dead-end street. That's what it was meant to be. Um, I don't feel it's safe opening it up. I hear that if a child does get- I hear that if a child does get hit down there, we will be sued because we are aware of it. And I agree with you, Councilman Muscat, when I see that big sign with the numbers on it coming down the street, it's obvious and you make an effort to go even below just because you know it, it's like to keep the trap of it. Um, I think since every resident did sign it, that's their wishes. And it's not like they asked for it to be taken down. They're asking it for it to be the way it was meant to be and how a lot of them, when they bought that property, it wasn't dead end. And people buy dead end streets for a reason. I'm sure Councilwoman Abdullah is that. So, okay, is there any further discussion before we vote on this?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Yeah, one, one, also one thing is, uh, I mean, I understand what the chief and also Mr. McCaffrey mentioned, but still the residents on Kingsbury were never, uh, never, I don't think anything's been discussed with them for the best solution. It was just imposed on them. So there was no like town hall meeting with the residents to ask their opinion, you know, what they thought, instead of just throwing it in their face.
Thank you, Councilwoman Conston.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. As a procedural point, I think we receive the petitions and then we can direct the police chief or whoever or the administration to do a study on, you know, w- when we can put the barrier back up. But I don't know that we can order the police department to do anything.
Um, I believe the clerk's office researched it and we can vote on this tonight. So at this time, I'm going to ask all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, at this time, I will take a roll call, Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Conston.
No.
Councilman Bazey.
Yes.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
No.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Yes.
Councilwoman Wenzel.
Yes.
Malonowski Maxwell is yes, that does pass. Next item on the agenda is Plant Moran's P L L C response to the resolution of the Dearborn Heights City Council requesting documents pursuant to Charter Section 6 dash, 6 dot 13.
Madam Chair. Go ahead.
So who'd you call?
Councilwoman Conston.
Uh, I, I've moved that we received note and file the correspondence uh, from Plant Moran who conducted our last city audit. Uh, indicating that they're available to help gather some of the data requested in the city council's prior resolution as outlined in 12A. Or.
Or by Councilwoman Abdullah. All those in favor, say aye.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
My concern with this is services would be $172.80 an hour. But isn't this information they've already collected? And if they've already collected it, they should just give it, give it in. I mean, if I requested it as a councilman, shouldn't they give it to me for free?
Okay, go ahead, um, Martin.
Yes, uh, so first of all, thank you for having me uh, this evening. A lot of the information is available, I would say raw data, in order to be able to present uh, the information to council. And uh, I believe Ray- uh, Raymond is doing the examination. Uh, we would have to actually accumulate some of the data. I would equate it to something similar to, uh, if you have um, your tax returns and you wanted to accumulate things for an IRS audit or something like that, especially going to older years, it's hard to gather and it's, it does take time to pull the information together. Just using an example, um, on exhibit one, the electronic download of uh, trial balance, uh, to just download a whole trial balance would be relatively simple and it would not take much time. But in order to break it down into separate funds, make sure that it's readable by another user, uh, would take a little bit of time. Um, the hours that I estimated um, on exhibit one as well as exhibit two, I would say that would be the worst case scenario. If, looking at it very closely, to be honest, I would tend to think that I would probably be at worst half of that. Uh, but I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, having any surprises or anything like that. I ju- just want to be upfront as much as possible. Another year, uh, item, just as an example, again, uh, item three on exhibit one, says multi-year schedule uh, for cable peg fees. Uh, a multi-year schedule does not exist. Uh, we would have to actually go through each individual file for as long as we can go back in time and gather that information and accumulate it and make sure it ties out. Um, so there is some accumulation, there's some time that would be uh, required on our end to accumulate this. Uh, but to be honest, um, I'm completely comfortable with um, even further discounting the fees. I know I want to be um, as economical as possible during this process, as fair as possible. And I just want to make sure that the city doesn't incur too many of, you know, the resources to be able to go through the examination. So I'm happy to help out in any way possible. Um, I also know that some of these records are probably available through the controller's office, but um, it may take a little bit longer to gather just because of the turnover that the controller's office has had over the last few years. Um, as you know, over the last three or four years, you've had, I think, a total of three different controllers. Um, so just want to make sure that, I just want to, one, spend the resources of the city appropriately. Uh, but I just want to be upfront, like I said. So that's why I sent the letter out, just to make sure we have this discussion and I just didn't want any surprises, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin.
Okay, I also would like to state that I, I was confused. So I called the Raymond Group and I asked them how they handle it when they're in this situation, because they also supplied, you know, for audits that other, you know, companies are doing. They said that they do it as a courtesy. If, if the information's readily available, say just as a courtesy provided. And I wondered if that's something that we could do, is if you've already got it, you just got it together and get it to us, that's fine. And if you have to, and if you have to research or put some kind of report together, then that might be something you charge for. I'm trying to unmute you, but you won't, but go ahead.
Well, thank you, Council Chair. Um, so if it's something that is literally something that's readily available, I absolutely would supply it uh, with no cost whatsoever. So that's not an issue whatsoever. Uh, I would say that newer data is readily available. So if it was something from 2019, uh, that would take, you know, an hour or two and we would not charge for anything like that. Um, I don't like nickel diming or anything like that, so unless it becomes a bigger project, that's when uh, I, I just want to be upfront. Uh, based on the number of years that's been requested, it does become uh, more of a project. I would say, um, you know, especially the older years, it takes time to download the data, time, time to accumulate and make sure it's in readable form. So that's all. Um, but I don't want to make a project out of it, as I'm sure you don't want to make a project out of it either. So I want to be, provide value to the city, not take away from the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there any further discussion in regards to this?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Abdullah.
Just want to, I'm just in case for technicality purposes, on exhibit two, uh, number two, they may want to have um, a correction on there, city credit cards with DS instead of cars, C A R S.
That's city cars, C A R S.
Okay, it says list of names to whom city credit cars or purchasing cards. So the, the, they're two different things.
What was it supposed to mean?
Sorry?
Did you think it was cars?
I'm, I'm presuming it should be cards with DS, because later on, they, they, they talk in return, in terms of different cars or city owned vehicles, but I don't think that's what they meant there.
Right, because I, I thought it was a question, so yeah, we can change that to read cards. Who made the motion?
I did.
Councilwoman Conston, can you read the motion, change that to, to correct the spelling on it?
Yes, I mean, I think this is just to receive note and file. If we enter into any kind of a contract with Plant Moran, that'll be separate, but this is just to receive note and file.
Okay, can you please? Okay.
With, including the correction from cars to credit cards.
Support. Support.
Well, then, Councilman Muscat, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Next item on the agenda is Plant and Moran P L, oh, I'm sorry. Right, next on the agenda is new business, new business license applications for Connect Auto Sales LLC located at 4413 South Beach Daily Street and Mickey Cooper Auto Sales LLC located at 23220 Van Born.
Madam Chair. Both of these?
What?
Can we take them at the same time?
They're both together.
I make them, can I make a motion then?
Go ahead, Councilman.
Uh, I move that city council approve the new business license applications, Connect Auto Sales at 4413 South Beach Daily Street and Mickey Cooper Auto Sales LLC 23220 Van Born as outlined in 13A.
Support.
Before that, Councilwoman Conston, is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel.
Yeah, last meeting, I um, I was upset that the uh, the uh, the motion uh, to uh, continue oratorium on News Carlots wasn't passed. And I uh, I, I guess I, I'm going to redirect my anger to uh, the ordinance enforcements. Until, until we get an ordinance uh, if, department to, to really enforce these uh, as far as the uh, landscape, uh, the weeds, the uh, double parked cars, uh, the flags that are signage violations, the very, the, the wrecked cars, Total Automotive on Van Born Road has been notified for months about these damaged totaled cars sitting right on the corner of Van Born and Grizzly Park with, with total disregard for the city of Dearborn Heights, other than to uh, take the money from our residents. And I'm sort of saying we should boycott this particular business with a lot, along with other businesses, because they, they snub their nose to our enforcement and we are not enforcing this issue. I uh, text the uh, ordinance director today and this issue with these cars broken down, totaled cars, sitting on, there were no tires, sitting on the ground, no doors, plastic over the doors that's shredded. It's like you're in the ghetto when you drive down the street and they're snubbing our, their noses at the city of Dearborn Heights and the ordinance department. And I, my response I got today was that the ordinance department is working with this particular establishment, along with others up and down Van Born Road. Until we get enforcement of our ordinances on these businesses and any other business, I'm against issuing any new business license to anybody. It's ridiculous, if we can't enforce our, 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 our ordinances on businesses in Dearborn Heights, I'm not going to vote for any new businesses. I don't care if they're abandoned buildings, I'd rather have that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Wenzel and Malonowski Maxwell opposed. Next item on the agenda is comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I got a quick uh, comment question, I believe, to uh, Director Sellme, if that's possible.
Is that for Sellme?
Yes, I believe it would be him.
Go ahead.
Mr. Sellme, uh, I see the work has started uh, at the uh, uh, on Oakland or West Hills uh, for the CSO project and uh, I'm glad it started. But uh, a while back, I had make a, made a recommendation about making the cul-de-sac on Oakland Court, either get rid of it or make it much smaller so the residents can get better uh, services when they plow snow and especially with uh, trash pickup. They have a problem there with the truck being able to go around that large cul-de-sac, uh, getting on the lawn and having to back up multiple times. So I, I'm hoping that uh, you've looked into that and if you, if you can consider doing it, uh, I think the residents in that neighborhood would be uh, happy uh, uh, that it happens. And then uh, if you can comment, and then I have one more comment, Council Chair, after he comments on that.
Sure, um, we have incorporated into plans to reduce the radius on that, so it is more user friendly for particularly the garbage trucks first and foremost.
All right, thank you. And then one more comment, and I think this goes to the administration. We had discussions over the CSO bond issue for $30 million and it went down to $18 million. I think we better have a study session and get that put to bed immediately also, uh, because we can't kick the can down the road anymore. And I think we've forgotten all about it, but I haven't. So we need to do something about that ASAP. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman? And so we got Councilwoman Wenzel and Councilman Bazey.
Mayor wants to give a chime in too.
Oh, wait a minute, okay, because we've got, wait a minute. Director Sellme, were you done?
I just wanted, I just wanted to comment on, on the bond issue that uh, Councilman Muscat brought up. Uh, we are having an internal conversation about the water and sewer budget on Thursday with Plant Moran. And we're going to propose a couple of different uh, variations of the budget with and without bonding. So um, and I'll, I'll hand it off to the mayor from there, but that is scheduled for Thursday afternoon.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Mayor, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I uh, thank you for bringing that up, Councilman Muscat. We're, we, we, I would like to urge the council chair, if possible, next Tuesday or the following Tuesday, but we need to talk because these projects are going on and we need to talk about the water department budget. We need to talk about uh, the bonding and what we're going to do. And, and it's, it's priority number one from the administration standpoint. And uh, we also need to talk about the Van Born corridor.
Okay, Mayor.
Thank you.
I, I would like to say something about the Van Born corridor. I did reach out to the council chair over a week ago for Taylor to see if we could coordinate something so the both, uh, chairs could get, I'm sorry, both city councils could get together to discuss this. I have yet to hear back from him, I don't know.
No, it, it, it's, it's not the council chair, there, you need the Tifa chair, because Tifa is the entire city of Taylor and it's the Tifa of Taylor that is supporting this project, it's not the Taylor City Council.
Yeah, he didn't tell me that. When I spoke with him, he said he was going to ask his council members and he never got back to me. If he'd told me that, I would, went on and got ahold of them. Okay, thank you. Next we have Councilman Wenzel.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this uh, COVID situation we're in right now, it's, you know, it's, it's devastating. It's putting a burden on everyone in the city and the, the world. And hopefully, you know, everybody wants to come, come out of this with landing on both two feet. But I think we should do better than that. During this time, we should uh, take this opportunity to not just land on both feet, but come out of this a better city. This is a time to look into revamping all of our departments. We should look into the five-day work week. Not only look into it, we should mandate that, because I personally had an issue with the five-day work week a couple of times on my building projects that I've got at my home. We should look into the ordinance department, uh, may have, have some kind of meetings with them, see what they need to enforce it. Should we turn it over to the police department, the ordinance, like other cities do? This, this is a time not to just co- hopefully come out the way we got into it, but this is a time to come out of this COVID situation, a better city than we did when we came into it. A better place for our residents to live, a better place for businesses to thrive and a, and a, and a better place for our children to be raised and residents to live their entire lives here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, next, Councilman Bazey.
Uh, yes, I actually had a, a question and uh, Councilman Wenzel touched a little bit on it uh, earlier. Uh, what, what is ordinance doing uh, with uh, with going to the businesses as mentioned by Councilman Wenzel? I, I do agree with Councilman Wenzel, you drive down, up and down some areas where there's some businesses and it's, it's, it is pretty embarrassing for them to be in city of Dearborn Heights. And you know, uh, I, I know there's been some email traffic between myself and some of you guys, some of the other council members with the ordinance director. So we, we do need better ordinance uh, enforcement to some of these businesses, you know, because some of them, obviously, uh, they're neighboring, uh, they have neighbors, uh, residential areas and uh, you know, it's, it's not good for the value for their, you know, for them, for their homes. And they do complain, I do get a lot of complaints from residents. So is there something that the director can, can he chime in and just let us know? And you know, it's just one of the other things that uh, there's also email traffic on, I haven't heard anything about, is uh, this business that has a dumpster that 445, you know, this comp, uh, what was it? What was it, there was a company, the, the trash company came in and they were. What was it? There was a company, the, the trash company came in and they were um, emptying the garbage at four forty-five, so it's waking up the residents. That's, that's kind of ridiculous why they're coming in at four forty-five. So can the director chime in on that one?
That was Fairwood Street.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, Director McIntyre, did you want to unmute yourself? There you go.
Well, first of all, let me tell you that last week alone, we had three hundred and twelve inspections that our ordinance office department went out on. Three hundred and twelve in one week. For the last four weeks, I've had at least one person uh, having to be away from work because of the virus. On an average, at least one person a week, and on one of those weeks, I had two people that had to be away from the office, so. Um, I, I've, I've answered the resident, the resident of uh, regarding the situation with the trash cans. Um, uh, the dumpster pickup at four forty-five. Uh, I did get a response and I'll tell you that I agree. There's a lot of email traffic that takes up a lot of time, my time, where I'm constantly answering because what happens is you may get contacted by someone and instead of directing them to speak with me or speak with the department, I'm then responding to multiple emails of the same topic over and over again. This is something that happens a lot. You know, Councilman Wensel mentioned the, the business on Van Born. I did answer him back today in a text message. I told him what was happening. But what's, what I also want to point out is I've also been contacted by council people that have said, hey, you know, don't be so hard on this business. They're a really good business. They do a lot for the city. But see, you know, ordinances, I tell this with the first graders when they come on their field trip into City Hall. At least one of the kids inside um, that group that come to tour, look up at the ordinance sign and are able to tell me that the word order uh, can come from the word ordinance. And ordinances are relative, so what might be important to one person may not be important to the next person. So while one business down Van Born, I'm being asked to give them a break that they're a good business and they're a good business owner, I'm being told to come on hard on another business. So there's a process on how we do this. I could write tickets all day long, but that's not the process that we do. And trust me, as council people, you're not gonna wanna deal with phone calls. I think you'd much prefer phone calls where it says the ordinance department is being consistent. They're making sure that things come into compliance, but they're trying to work with people. That's what, that's what we should be doing during COVID. We should be working with people. I shouldn't have to get emails where I'm told I'm ridiculous or my department is ridiculous. I find that rude and quite honestly, I'm getting a little tired of the way I'm disrespected, especially at these meetings and by this council. The way this kind of behavior is allowed. This now has become a place where you shame people. All these questions that are asked during these council meetings can be asked. All of you have my cellphone and trust me, many of you call me on Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays. You text message me and you send me messages. I'm available. What I would like to have, Council Chair, is a study session where we can sit down with the mayor in a study session and talk about what the real needs are. Do we need more staffing? Is there a different way to approach this? Are there things that we need to make a priority? But I, I will tell you today, excuse me, real quick. I will tell you today that I've been insulted during these meetings. I've had my personal business put out during these meetings and I'm not gonna tolerate it anymore. I have, I, I don't have to tolerate it. I'm an employee of the city as well and I, I expect to be respected the way I respect you.
And.
Madam Chair.
Just don't include me in there cuz you know I don't do that.
Madam Chair.
Wait a minute, no.
No, Council Chair, you called me on a Saturday regarding a tree that was being cut down in your neighborhood. So you, you've called me.
That's not the only time out of three years.
Okay, but I'm just saying, everyone, and I mean, to say that you haven't, you haven't done it is not, that's not the, that's not the case.
I'm not even really calling a tree being cut down. I don't remember calling on that. And if you say I did, then maybe I did, but I try not to. I try to bump people through you like they're supposed to.
Yeah, and at the same time, I'm being told that I only work part-time. You know, I've been, we've been said that the directors work part-time because we don't work the fifth day. So it's gotta be one way or the other. I, I, I.
Okay, Councilman Bazey.
I just wanna make sure, I mean, right now, okay, what, what, what was mentioned earlier? There's some council members or somebody else, I don't know what was he, uh, the Director McIntyre is referring to as we're asking for special favors for certain people. I don't know who that person was, but we should, we should be complying with the ordinance. And there's nobody, nobody, excuse me, nobody's above the law. So it's like asking, you know, what the, the police chief is, hey, if this person's speeding, you know, oh, you know, give that person a break. Me, myself, I will never ask that question of you, Director McIntyre or the police chief. So we, we need, we need to enforce the ordinance. I don't care if they're doing, you know, billion dollar business or they're doing, you know, a hundred dollar business with the city. They need to obey the laws and the ordinance for the city so the residents can be also assured. And you know, you mentioned that you give violations, you know, I mean, it, it would be nice for the residents to know like, hey, you know, this is what we're doing. And you know, I mentioned that, you know, many times, we need to have better communications with our residents, you know, to post it on, you know, on, on the city website. So I mean, may, maybe you should put something, you know, on the website to alert, to let the residents know so that, that way they can not call the council members and let them know like, hey, this business is doing this. Maybe the residents need to know, you know, what you're doing. So that can kind of, you know, you know, take, take the, you know, a lot of the stuff that you said, you're getting a lot of messages from us.
Okay, next we have Councilman Abdo.
No, I'm outside, didn't have nothing.
Okay, Councilman Wensel.
Yeah, um, I, I have asked, I have talked to Jack before about Mel's exchange. Um, there was an issue with him putting the extra items out on, on, in front of his store and it was brought to our attention by the owner that uh, he had a variance and we were asking for uh, acknowledgement of this variance and we had, we've never gotten anything from anybody. And so that's one of the things if, if Mr. McIntyre is referring to asking for special treatment. I, I am, if that's what he's talking about, I'm guilty of that. I just asked him to look into this matter. And uh, um, also, I'm more concerned about massive blight, broken down junk cars opposed to a guy having four or five ladders or a couple of go-karts sitting in front of his business. It's the blight, the, the garbage that's in front of these buildings, the, the, the grass, the, the buildings, non, unmaintained buildings, that's what I'm referring to. These, these ordinance violations where, you know, someone's got too many things out in their, their front, that, that's fine. I mean, you can write them up or whatever, but I'm talking about these blatant, you know, snubbing their noses at the city violations and total disregard for anything. And my main concern is not how many tickets we write, but how we enforce these tickets. How, you know, do we make them do something? Are we gonna, we're gonna have to rewrite this ordinance and I'm gonna look into it where we give these people a warning and then write them a violation and then if that's not responded to, then we shut them down. We have the police department come out and shut this business down. We have an ordinance where we send a cleanup crew into a residence that's repeated violations to clean up their property and charge it to the residents under taxes. I'm tired of this. We get complaints to city council members, you, you all know. We get complaints all the time about blight, residential blight, business blight. I'm tired of hearing about, it's about time we do something instead of talking about it.
Okay, Councilman, thank you. Um, any other council members have any comments from the council table? Councilman Coniston?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'd like to thank Jack McIntyre. Uh, he promptly got back to me. There are residents on Hanover near Gully. Uh, there is a gentleman who owns a home, it is not his principal residence and he runs it out on Airbnb and other sites for commercial uses. Uh, he has weddings there. He rents it out for five hundred and fifty dollars a night. Uh, serves alcohol, alcohol to minors, has, sometimes is close to a hundred people there, not wearing masks. And then he also operates a car rental business out of there where he rents cars uh, for two weeks or less. Uh, the area is not zoned for that. I forgot an ordinance I'm gonna introduce to particularly address the uh, rentals of residential homes on Airbnb, Airbnb and others for what amounts to a commercial use. Uh, it's an issue in this city and in other cities. But I did send a message to uh, Jack when I was there on a Saturday and I got a immediate response and shared it with the residents, some of whom I think are attending this meeting. Uh, so thank you, uh, Director McIntyre. And then also, I agree with Councilman Ray Muscat. These uh, sewer improvements to our sewer system, which are mandated, are no small issue. Uh, the city has either the option of uh, raising everyone's taxes immediately or going out into bond for the uh, expenses. And I suggest we do the, the latter. Uh, originally, the quote included improving the, uh, or updating our uh, water meters and that was taken out, but uh, this has to be addressed and it has to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members have comments?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have one quick announcement. Um, we are having our annual back-to-school distribution of school supplies and backpacks along with food and personal protection equipment on Saturday, September the fifth, from six to eight PM. It's gonna be at Annapolis High School and that is down on Clipper. I want to thank our sponsors, if I may, including Eternal Light Organization for providing the food. We have GMC, a youth leadership program of five oh one C three that is helping with the backpacks. Annapolis High School Key Club, which provides a lot of the manpower, volunteer services. Student organizer Maisy Fajuda, who does a great job getting everyone organized and motivated. Councilman Bill Bazey and then myself, as we donate backpacks and school supplies and food items. So again, this is gonna be on Saturday, September the fifth, six to eight PM at Annapolis High School. And this is for everyone. You're welcome to join us. And if you're interested in volunteering or would like to donate, um, you can, you know, if you like, give me a call. It's two one three, three four eight, nine eight four eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from council members? This time I will open it up to community announcements and I'm gonna have George to help me look for hands. George, are you there?
Yep, I got Mark Myers has a hand up.
Okay, go ahead. Um, unmute him.
Okay, you guys can hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, uh, thank you, Council Chair. I wanna bring attention to something that the police department's gonna be doing for the month of September. Um, the dramatic lighting is not only showing off my follicle challenged head, uh, but I'm hoping that it's showing that I'm wearing a different uniform. I'm wearing a light blue shirt with a gold badge and on the back it has purple in police and a ribbon to signify the month of September as suicide awareness. Our police department has decided to take on the cause, to bring attention to a, a, a topic that we should all be concerned of. Um, suicide month, awareness month is the month of September. Um, our officers will be wearing an alternate uniform during that time that they're choosing. So underneath their outer exterior vest or their internal carrier, our officers will be wearing a shirt that signifies our determination to help prevent one suicide in our community. Uh, suicide right now is the tenth leading uh, cause of death in the United States. It's the second leading between ages of fifteen and thirty-four. Uh, we actually have more suicides in the United States than we do homicides. And uh, it doesn't have an economic barrier. It doesn't have a racial barrier. It doesn't have a profession barrier. Our agency, our family, has experienced loss of one of our own members in two thousand and eighteen to suicide. Um, we take this very seriously. We see it every day. And this is one thing that we can hope to prevent. So by bringing attention to our shirts and what we're wearing, we hope one person asks the question of why are you wearing that different color uniform? Um, we're, we're, we're armed, for lack of a better word, with assistance to say, where can you go find help? What a crisis line is. Um, telling people to go to their religious institutions, their medical facilities, to the police department, to the fire department. We can get people help that are in crisis and we can direct family members that are trying to help family members um, in, in, that are experiencing a crisis in their life that might be contemplating suicide. Uh, we collected about a thousand dollars and are donating to Call for Help, which is a police organization that deals with law enforcement homicide, uh, suicide. Um, but ultimately, our goal is to start the conversation. We want people to ask, why are you wearing those funny colored blue shirts with the purple writing as police officers? And we wanna try to prevent one preventable death in our community. If we can do that, we've succeeded for the month of September. So please ask. We have that literature. And if you're experiencing crisis, you can text seven four one, seven four one uh, to a crisis hotline and they will help you right then. But uh, look for us in this alternate uniform for September. And if you know somebody that needs help, reach out to them cuz if we can save one person, that would be a great thing for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Director McCaffrey?
Oh, hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just wanted to give an update. Uh, first off, I wanted to give a, an update on a new service. Uh, starting next Monday, August thirty-first, we will be offering a delivery service to our residents. Residents can call in starting this Friday, eight twenty-eight and request delivery of their holds to the residences. Uh, residents can call in upon receiving notice that their hold has arrived and request it be delivered. Uh, we will be doing deliveries one to five, Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Um, also this Thursday, we will be having a program on pruning essentials. Uh, join us via Zoom at six PM this Thursday, August twenty-seventh. Um, learn when to prune, how to prune, where to prune and what tools to use. Most of us fear this process. I know I do. So pruning doesn't incorrectly result in damaged plants, disappointment and failure, so avoid a pruning disaster. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library soon.
Thank you. Any other public announcement? Councilman Wensel?
Yeah, thank you. I wanna speak as a member of the Dearborn High Watershed Stewart Commission. Um, we recently had a couple of projects take place uh, in Dearborn Heights. One was the uh, Richard A. Young Recreation Center Rain Gardens and the other was the uh, beautification project of Heather Lane Park. Uh, both projects went off very well. We had some great participation, some great weather. Um, we had several sponsors, local businesses and organizations sponsoring one hundred percent of all money raised uh, and donated goes right to the Dearborn High Watershed Stewart Commission. We had, we had dozens and dozens of residents, dozens of uh, the Crestwood High School, honor society students, several adults. We had um, Police Chief Mark Myers showed up and uh, gave us some great sweat equity. Mike McCaffrey from the uh, library director, Lisa Hicks Clayton, Bob Constance was there, fellow watershed steward commissioner. And uh, our council chair, Dece Malinowski Maxwell, put in a hard day of labor. And it was a great project. It was a nice thing to get out and talk and have fun with everyone while doing something good for the community. And I'm gonna thank everyone for showing up and uh, doing what they did. And please, anybody that heard about this and you wanna do it, respond next time. We'll have, we'll have several projects coming up and thanks, thanks to all the volunteers that showed up for these events.
Thank you. Any other community announcement? Here, at this time, I'm gonna open it up to public comments. State, state your name and you have three minutes.
Um, Council Chair Chrissy had her hand up. I'm not sure if it was for the last one or for this one.
Okay, um, I'm you, Chrissy?
Hi, I, um, hi, Council Chair. I just wanted to say really quick, Councilman Wensel, I did see the post and I did hear from Barb Gorka and I appreciate everything the Watershed Stewart did on, I'm not gonna be in this week, but we didn't get any of that money. So um, it may be sometime next week we can sit down and discuss on all the accounting. It, it would greatly help our record.
Oh, well, I, I, I correct you. I, I deposited checks this past week um, from all sponsorship money was deposited uh, in the treasures, the department.
Yeah, it usually goes through us so we can figure out where to put it, but I'll get with the treasurer then. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I will go to public comment. I'm gonna please ask people, if you raise your hand and it's gone, it means I put it down and put your name on the list. No need to keep raising your hand. This time, we have Gary Miyaki. Go ahead, please. Wait a minute, we need, unmute you, sorry, woman.
Uh, yes, Gary Miyaki, Plainfield Street. Uh, two issues. Uh, one, Council Chair has mentioned uh, the idea that I had um, uh, been directed or in some way had received some direction regarding a charter uh, issue. I do not recall ever receiving that. And if I had, I would have advised that we would need a charter revision commission if this was going to end up being something more extensive as opposed to something that might be a limited charter amendment. The second thing is, this opinion, which was item 8A to the agenda, was not something that was done lightly. It was done very thoroughly, very extensively, since this issue was supposed to have been a $1.4 million issue. And it's an extremely solid opinion. And I want to comment with respect to Councilman Muscat's statement about all of these other opinions. I would note that Mr. Lado's opinion, which is consistent with mine to a degree, there were things that took place at the FCC level that have changed things, in my view, relative to what Mr. Lado had advised. But these opinions that you see if you go online, what you realize is that they are really put out there by people who are advocates for the industry. And they ignore the 2017 opinion of the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit in favor of a 2008 opinion, which stands for their position. And by the way, these are the same people who give you 5G, which I know that this body has been most concerned about. And I think that's something that should be kept in mind. But if the council as a body wants to end up having a further discussion about this, I would be glad to discuss this opinion because it is lengthy, but it's meant to withstand serious scrutiny. It's not meant to be a two-page opinion. It's meant to be something where, if people want to end up having something that they can rely on, they can rely on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Barbara Young. Let's unmute. Hold on, I'm going to unmute you. You need to unmute me. Okay, go ahead, Ms.
Okay. Hi, my name is Barbara Young, and I want to address the racist issues within the school districts. I want to let my kids tell you what they've experienced thus far from going to OW Best Middle School and Annapolis High School.
Hello. My sister and I are dealing with issues with white kids asking us for the NIGGA pass, and nor are teachers or superintendent has done anything about it. And we think that's very disrespectful and wrong, and it needs to change.
I've actually been personally asked this question. But I've been asked for the NIGGA pass multiple times throughout school. Even after school, I've been asked, and none of the teachers or anybody will do anything about it. They don't pay attention to it. I have spoken with Mrs. Mass and Mr. Brock, especially in February during African-American History Month. And I've asked them multiple times why there's nothing representing the African-American students. Why won't she say or do anything about them asking the black students for that pass? She's claimed that she's addressed it, but come to find out, she did not. So something definitely needs to be done to address these issues.
Before you go any further...
And I'm hoping you guys could definitely...
Mrs. Young, unfortunately, City Council has no control over the school districts. They're a separate entity, and you need to address that with the superintendent for your school district. We can't, we can't, we want you, but we can't do anything. Madam Chair.
She told me the next step was you guys. That's what she told me, the next step, was talking with you guys, then state legislation and stuff like that.
Because we don't pull up what to do, and they don't tell us what to do. And I'm just confused how they would have...
Madam Chair. But at the same time, and I agree with you, Council Chair. Yes, that is not within our jurisdiction. But at the same time, I'm going to tell you something right now. It is totally unacceptable for anybody to talk to any child like that. And I'd like to go on record that that is absolutely ridiculous. And if somebody from the school system, I don't care who it is, is not looking into this and looking into this the right way, this is totally unacceptable. I can tell you myself, as a child, I was called different racial names. And I can tell you, it does affect you. It does make it very difficult to continue and do your schooling. And in this day and age, we are in 2020, this is not acceptable for any child to be called any type of racial name. And I'm going to tell you right now, I'm furious right now. If there's somebody in the school system, and I'm doing it publicly, that's allowing something like this to happen, that is totally not okay by me, and I don't give a damn if it is or is not within my jurisdiction. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, who?
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I agree, that's unacceptable. What I want to offer you is I am the constituent services community liaison for our state Senator Betty Jean Alexander. I don't know if you have pen and paper right now. If you do, please write down this number. Call me first thing in the morning. I'm going to say it one more time. And our office will assist in facilitating that conversation. Because that is unacceptable.
Yeah. Very unacceptable, and...
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Wenzel?
Yeah, I also enact what Councilwoman Abdullah said. I mean, yeah, that's ridiculous. That is totally unacceptable. And I wanted to actually ask Chief, our Police Chief, for the resource officer, is there something that the resource officer at the school or somebody can actually go intervene? And I mean, there should be zero tolerance, and no kid should go through school, feel threatened, or be called in any racial or be discriminated against. So I wanted to actually ask the Chief of Police to see if he can chime in, to see what can be done. I mean, we should have a threat-free area for like schools. You know, that kids shouldn't feel threatened when they go to school, especially be racially, you know, have some racial remarks towards anybody. So I wanted to see if our Chief can chime in and see if we can help out those children.
Thank you.
The superintendent told me, the superintendent told me that it's hard to, when dealing with the freedom of speech thing, because so many parents have voiced that the kids cursing and stuff like that shouldn't be a big deal. So I've spoken to them about how the way the kids talk, and they just claim that it'll be a more bigger problem with the parents. Just like she told me that it'll be a more bigger problem with the parents as far as funding if she were to show some kind of support for the Black Lives Movement. I didn't think that would, I thought that was crazy.
Okay, thank you. Chief, would you like to speak briefly?
I can't speak about this. I can't speak about this specific instance because I don't know any details. But what I can tell you is that both the SRO is trained in many different aspects. But we also, we let school stuff happen in school, and we let police actions happen for the police department. That is something that it's a learning experience at the school when they're dealing with these issues on how to rectify situations where you have these things going on. We, if we get a criminal complaint about it, we, of course, follow through with it. We can't do both because we don't always get them brought to us. If the criminal complaint is made, if somebody says, I feel like I'm being racially intimidated, obviously, we'll follow through with it. If the school's only notified, we can't because we don't know anything about it. So it's a very delicate line. I can't tell you what Ms. Young experienced on this one because I don't have that in front of me at this time. I would probably, it sounds like she hasn't made a police report about any of these instances. If she has, we had followed through on them. But the school, we try to let work through problems amongst kids because it's a learning environment. If we have to go from learning environment to criminal investigation, the SRO will take over and will also prosecute that. So I hope that helps. Ms. Young, if you feel you need a police complaint, we will happily follow through with it. It is a legal process, but I mean, that's what we're here for. But we also try to, at the school level, rectify differences amongst youth through, I'm sure they do it through counseling, mediation, and things like that to prevent the criminal justice system getting involved. So I can't speak on behalf of the school district, but I know we'll follow through if a criminal complaint is made.
Thank you. Next, we have Sam Hatch. Can somebody please unmute Sam?
Hello?
Oh, there you are. Go ahead, sir. You have three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I would like to ask Chief P. three a question, please.
Chief Myers, you mean?
Chief Myers, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go, go ahead.
Chief Myers, I got a question for you, if you would, I'll answer it, please. Is using a cell phone while driving, is it legal or illegal?
If he's asking me about a specific case, I can't comment on it if he's in the middle of some type of prosecution. But...
No, I'm not.
I would encourage people to not drive distracted. It's a discretionary call. If you're driving on that phone distracts you from properly operating your vehicle, then you are distracted driving. It also makes it that you're not aware of your surroundings, which is a legal obligation. So I can't speak on this specific instance. It's too vague. But I would encourage all of our residents to refrain from doing that and drive safely.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you so much, Chief. Madam Chair, I don't know if you guys are familiar with last week's meeting. That's an issue that happened with Mayor Dan Puleko. While you guys were conducting city businesses and taking care of city council meeting, Mayor Puleko was on his phone using Zoom. That was very disrespectful to us as a citizen, and I believe to you guys as a council members. Therefore, I would like Mayor Puleko to do two things. First of all, offer an apology to the citizen of Dearborn Heights in general. And a meeting before last meeting, two meetings ago, Daniel Puleko accused Councilman Tom Wenzel for having his grandkids disturbing the city council meeting while his grandkids were not around him. And Mr. Wenzel has nothing to do with that disruption. It was a total different citizen of the city. Dan Puleko was using a city-owned vehicle to do his personal runs during a council meeting, consuming a city of Dearborn Heights gas, risking a vehicle that's owned by the city, putting the city in liability. And that was very disturbing, and it was very disrespectful. So I would like to hear anything from the mayor about that issue.
Mayor, would you like to respond?
No, I do not wish to respond.
Well, just like always, Mayor Puleko, he does not wish to respond. Therefore, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
I know we do have a resolution for marking of vehicles, but I will urge you guys to put up another resolution for all city vehicles to be parked at the city hall before and after business hours, no matter what your position is and who the hell are you, regardless. Because unfortunately, we have a lot of directors who are using those city vehicles for their personal runs. And we did have this issue with several directors. And now the mayor is using our vehicle, which is my vehicle, because I'm a taxpayer myself, and is consuming my gas and putting the city in liability. And now he does not wish to answer. So we don't want him to use that vehicle no more. It's our vehicle. We don't want to ruin it.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Next, we have Leslie Winless. It's Leslie. Can somebody unmute Leslie?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Okay, Councilwoman, they have to direct a question to you through me, and they did not.
Okay. I had an answer on the resolution because we have one on the...
Sorry, I can't find her.
I'm unmuted, but I wasn't sure, like, if it was my turn or...
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. My name is Leslie Winless, and I live at 2369 Annapolis Street. Like everyone, I was mortified as I watched the murder of George Floyd. However, my devastation was intensified because for people of color, we saw our brothers, our fathers, our sons in the eyes of George. I grew up and aged out of the Detroit foster care system, and I have experienced many things that most people would consider their worst nightmare. Out of all the terrifying experiences I've lived through, there is nothing more prevalent than the fear I have of law enforcement, the dread I feel of knowing that one day my children may be innocent suspects based on the color of their skin. I know this is probably shocking for many people who have watched me collaborate with the police, including the Dearborn Heights Police on projects for the common good of our community. What you all don't know is that I fight through an immense amount of fear and anxiety to put on a brave face for those events. On a day-to-day basis, as a black woman in America, I avoid any interaction with any form of authority. When I am driving, I damn near crashed my car at the thought of an encounter with an officer, even though I have insurance registration and no warrants. I can recall countless times where I have been in danger, and the thought to call 911 never crossed my mind. The saddest part of this is not that I had the anxiety, but that the terror isn't irrational. We truly worry about the safety, our safety, in the hands of the same people who are supposed to help us. My son is only three years old, and I have already played the talk out a million times in my head. I have shared that same speech with my daughters. When you are pulled over, make sure you put both hands on the steering wheel so they are visible. Don't reach into your pockets. Don't talk back. Don't fight back. And you announce every move you make. Be respectful. The point of the talk, no matter what's said in it and no matter what parent is saying it, is please don't give them an excuse to kill you. Make it home to me. Then every time I turn on the news or log on to social media, I see people of color following those exact same rules and still not surviving at a simple traffic stop. So now what do I tell my children? Don't wear a hoodie. Don't go jogging in broad daylight. Don't eat cereal on your couch. Don't sleep in your bed. Don't fit the profile. The talk is turning into a full-on book report. So where does it stop? I am begging for actions and policies from this body until there is no more need for parents to have these conversations. And prosecution of police officers that abuse their authority happened at the time that they commit their crime. You have taken the first step tonight by approving the Community and Cultural Relations Commission's appointments. Thank you for that. And I pray that we continue to work towards positive progression on this topic.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Latonya Gator. George, can you find her?
Got her.
Go ahead. Latonya Gator, you have three minutes.
Hi, everyone. Again, my name is Latonya Gator. I have been attending the city council meetings via Zoom since May. And on a lighter note, I want to say thank you, Mayor Puleko and anyone else on this call, the city council members, for being in support of reactivating the Culture Commission. Again, as the mayor said earlier, if appointed to the commission, I really do think a strong focus needs to be on bridging these gaps in our community to helping people who are underrepresented feel represented in our community, to feel safe, to feel supported, to get access to resources. And again, to have voice in matters that affect them and possibly could affect others. I've been doing some research within a community and some old, like, personal, small grassroots connections with people. And I have gathered that it's not just people of color who are not feeling as safe or as supported in this community. It's really happening to elders. It's happening to people with physical and mental disabilities. And again, I think that that's why this Diversity and Culture Commission should be something that's a top priority if we want the city, again, to be safe, to be progressive, and to be wholesome. Again, if there's anything I can do to support anyone or to be a voice for anyone in any of these matters, I'd be happy to connect with you in any way that I can. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. Thank you for giving me the time to speak. And oh, and I'm sorry, I I 100% support Leslie um being on the Culture Commission as well as Natalie. I've also given the mayor other names uh of community members who have also shown interest in diversity work, and I'd be happy to give those names again if given the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next, we have um Councilman Caston. Go ahead, please.
I was just gonna say to the Ms. Young and I and also Councilman Wensel are graduates of the D seven schools and I know Jennifer Mast and I also know the dean of students there at Annapolis and the the council chair is correct. We we don't govern the schools, the school board does, but those comments to your children are those are hate crimes and um they should not go uh unaddressed. So I will speak to and send in uh some correspondence to uh the superintendent about uh about the issue.
Okay, thank you. We have Mark Myers. I do believe he wants to respond. I'm sorry, Chief Myers.
Yeah, she's Ms. Young, if you Ms. Young, if you know how to access the chat, I private uh chatted you with the lieutenant in charge of our investigative unit and our S R and our school resource officers and his phone number. If you're able to get that, you can contact them. I had already privately messaged you. I just want to make sure you get it.
Did you find it at the bottom of your screen?
Got it? Okay, so you went to the contact and we'll be able to help you further with with navigating this 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 incident. It's despicable.
Okay, next we have Councilman Tom Wensel.
Yeah, thank you. Um, first of all, I'd like to uh uh tell Ms. Young that I feel very bad about the situations he's in. And um months ago, we had the uh school board uh superintendents at a meeting and I suggested that we have a uh some kind of joint commission with the uh school boards and the city of Dearborn Heights City Council and and nothing was done about it, but I think maybe we should look into that. So we can work together when these kind of situations arise. And um uh I'd like to thank Sam for bringing that up about the the comments. Um, the mayor wouldn't respond to it, but I will. At that time, when that comment was made about me, um, I thought it was a nonproductive to make any uh to respond to it that particular day. And uh because anytime my kids are around while I'm in a meeting, I put myself on mute. And if you go back at that meeting, you'll see that anytime council chair called on me, she said, unmute yourself. So that wasn't me. And uh I I took it personally, but thought it was, you know, petty and non uh no use to respond to such remarks. Um, also, the accusations about the watershed steward commission's sponsorship money, uh I I can't bite my tongue any longer on this. There's certain people in the administration who have accused me of doing things uh for my children, strong-arming companies to sponsor, um, the taking money and not depositing it. All checks, all monies that are donated to the watershed steward commission are are checks only made out to the watershed steward commission of Dearborn Heights, no cash checks, no checks made out to Tom Wensel and his kids. Uh, these accusations are made by people who never show up for these volunteer things, never seen them there, but they're the first ones to accuse people of 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 mishandling money. I took these checks in the city hall to the treasurer's department, handed them over. They diligently looked up the fund. It took them a while. They got the exact fund that goes into the watershed steward fund, made sure those checks were deposited, the checks were deposited into the correct fund. And um and and that's I I I tirelessly tirelessly spend time for this fund, getting sponsors, spending hours and hours and hours of my own time going to businesses to get sponsorships. It's an insult for someone to accuse me of not depositing the money properly or misusing the money or using the money for my family. It's an insult. Like I said, these are the people who you never see at any kind of volunteer function. I'm I'm tired of it. I'm tired of the accusations. People in this administration should be ashamed themselves, but you know what? They're not they'll never be ashamed themselves because that's the kind of people they are. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we have um Chrissy. Go ahead, please. Can somebody unmute her?
The Councilman Wensel, if you're referring to me accusing you of anything, no. I have accused you in the past of strong-arming GFL artistic and other companies who have come to us and the police department as it relates to your children, but not this. I was trying to squelch something that was happening. I was trying to get the accounts so I could take it back to the few people that were accusing you of that. I don't think I did anything with accusations, but if we want to talk about accusations, I'll be more than happy to talk about them now or any other time. When you're hitting up contractors to do extra work for your home, when you're hitting up other people.
Madam Chair, point of order. Write you a check.
Mute her.
That's unacceptable.
Mute it. Let her talk. I have nothing to hide. I know you don't, Tom. You're as reliable and a fine gentleman and and a and a credit to to your children.
Point of order. I'm gonna start muting everybody. Kate, Tom, you want me to unmute Christina?
Yeah, go ahead. Yes.
Okay, I'm going to. Go ahead, please.
Again, I was not accusing you of anything with that. I asked you very nicely and in the next time to do it because we did get certain people questioned that and I was going to squelch that. But when you jump on that, Mr. Wensel, you need to stop because nobody was doing that. And while I do volunteer for many different things, it's not the watershed stewards. I do, I've never had an issue with the watershed stewards. I've worked with them. And while Barr might have not told you where to put the money so we get it in the right place, that's fine, but don't tell me that I was accusing you of certain things because I can accuse you and I will be right.
Well, if you're accusing me of strong-arming people to donate money to me, that's a lie. You just.
It's not. We've had contractors when you wanted to build your addition.
At this time, I'm muting both of you and nobody's gonna speak on this any further. You can talk privately if you need to. I'm not gonna air dribble laundry at city council meetings. Next, we have um Dana Parrish. Can you unmute him?
Okay.
Parrish, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Um, yes, I can. Go ahead. You have three minutes.
Speaking of no controversy, that's me. Uh, Madam Chair, after the previous meeting, um, I followed up with an email to the mayor and the police chief regarding the matter uh that I brought up at the meeting. Uh, it was a kind of a detailed letter, email, I should say. Um, and uh I asked him some questions, he and the uh chief of police. And in response, uh, the mayor said, uh, in his response, I will quote, "I do not respond to homophobic rants. This is a hor- this is harassment and I will not tolerate these attacks on any employee." Mayor Polacko. Uh, I since emailed him back with a copy to all those addressed because he sent this to everyone that was dressed and asked him specifically what the homophobic rant was that was stated in this letter and uh asked him to explain that to me. He hasn't done that. And I'd like him now, since he wouldn't respond to the email, to respond to me now exactly what the homophobic rant was that was uh stated in the email. So can he do that, please? And if not, we need to apologize for saying it.
Am I unmuted? Hello?
Yes, you are.
Yeah, I. Okay, I think the response was appropriate and you understand it. I have nothing further to say.
Madam Chair, uh, you received the copy of the email, correct?
Correct.
Okay, uh, how much time do I have left, Madam Chair?
You have you're at one minute, 14 seconds.
Okay, I'm gonna read the email. I'm gonna let the public decide if it's if it was homophobic. This is addressed to the chief of police and the mayor. Gentlemen, since being appraised at the director's previous criminal record at the Dearborn Heights City Council meeting on Tuesday, July 28th, 2020, I am concerned about the ongoing responsibilities of the director in that position. My concerns are as follows. One, he has a badge of authority which can be considered by some as a police officer. The badge grants certain authority, but it also carries a heavy responsibility, not the least of which is integrity, honesty, and a degree of unsullied reputation. If that authority has been abused slash misused in the past, is a question that goes unanswered. Many victims of abuse wait years or decades before coming forward because of fear of consequences. Two, he has represented himself in all verbal and written correspondence with a first name that was not his legal name. It is true that he has stated in that same council meeting that John Kennedy did go by Jack. The difference is that he signed his name and all official legal correspondence, including documents signed and addressed to him in office or addressed to John F. Kennedy or John Kennedy. Three, he has stated in council meetings in the past, specifically when addressing, debating the marking of city vehicles ordinance passed by the city council, that he disagreed with the ordinance specifically because he was concerned for safety while conducting surveillance after dark. A person with this criminal history should never be permitted to conduct surveillance on any of our residents after dark in unmarked city vehicle or private vehicle using his eyes or any other visual enhancement devices, binoculars, cameras, telephone lens, et cetera. I'm a supporter of giving any person a second chance who makes a mistake. This offense is uniquely different, however. This is not a mistake. This is a character flaw that is deeply rooted in personality. He hasn't had to register as a sex offender in Michigan. To the best of my research, he's evaded detection thanks to the efforts within the city of Dearborn Heights. My efforts to obtain full legal names were hampered only to a certain extent, but thanks to public records available to everyone, I was able to discover the truth to his identity. My final concern in this matter is that chief of police at the time he was hired, Chief Lee Gavin, did not ensure that this information was disclosed and that he was prevented from doing the kinds of things like surveillance that potentially put the public at risk. Mr. Gavin still works in the city of Dearborn Heights. Issue needs to be addressed as well. And I I also uh addressed what exactly uh the uh the criminal code was for the offense. Uh, please formulate some plan, patients, residents in the community and communicate directly to the council. I appreciate your efforts in this matter. Respectfully, Dana Parrish. That's my email. And if it's a homophobic rant, uh, I would I would invite anybody to please tell me what the homophobic rant was, especially since I didn't know that the gentleman uh was gay at the time it was written.
Thank you. Anybody else have any public comment? George, help me look to see if anybody else. Oh, I've got treasures in here, Abil Hawk. Hold on, may I unmute you? Oh, boy. It's not. You need to unmute your end. There you go.
I am. Wow. And I thought I am crazy. Good evening, everyone. I want to talk about two things. Uh, first, the raise for Colleen Garcia, the deputy for treasurer. Lots of people really don't know what the treasurer office does. I didn't even know myself. All I can say that John Riley was the most conservative treasurer in the city. He cared for every penny was spent. He cared so much about the city. And he did the train those people inside that office to the point I sat with one of them for almost one and a half hours because she made typo error for one penny until she found where that typo error. And the reason I am putting this forward because Colleen is the backbone of that office at this time. She's a training me. She's going to train Lisa Hicks Clayton or Bob Constant, whoever wins the election. And she's taken on lots of responsibility. She comes on her vacation day to do things. Uh, nobody in the office, including myself, we don't know how to do it. She does. And I hope that every heads of department, including the mayor, to fight for those employees who are doing a great job in the city, who are protecting the money and the integrity of everything in the city, but come with something reasonable. Don't come with 30,000 and 40,000 or 40%. Come with something sensible, which is reasonable in the market. And I believe this city council will approve it. And we don't need actuary report or anything for something like that because when we come up with $25,000 for several people increase, that is without actuary, without any calculation. So I hope that the mayor and the city council recognize those people, not by just bringing them to the city council and give them piece of paper that you are the employee of the month. They should be recognized a lot more than that. A second thing, we do have uh American Express miles around 5,900,000, worse around $33,000 according to our previous treasurer, John Riley. This money sitting in my possession doing nothing. It's a piece of paper sitting on the table. I don't know for how long. I need your approval to allow me with the help of John Riley to get the credit card or to get some kind of, I don't know how, to use it to upgrade some things in the city, including the mayor wants a shredder for his office. Maybe the city council needs computer. Maybe there is enough money probably to update several several offices. And I hope you approve myself and John to go ahead, see how we can, you know, cash in those miles instead they sitting in the safe. And I really thank you very much and I hope everybody will breathe little bit and calm down.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions out there? I do acknowledge you, um, Ms. Young, but you are only allowed to speak once at a city council meeting and I apologize for that. Any uh Councilman Caston, you've already spoke. You can no longer speak either on in regards to public comments. Um, they did not question you directly through me. Anybody else? Any other residents that would like to speak tonight? This time?
Move to adjourn, council chair.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No, uh, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Have a good day, everybody.
Good night, everyone.